Call the meeting to order, please. Can I get a roll call?
Mrs. Craig? Mr. Hayden? Mr. Giuliano? I thought he, I thought I saw his number there. Mr. Nuss?
Here.
Ms. Ranzan?
Here.
Mrs. Steele?
Here.
Mrs. Stahl? Mrs. Witty?
Here.
Mr. DiAgostino?
Here.
We have a forum.
Would you please join me in the flag seat? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under visible.
Invisible.
Liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the act, the Sussex Wanted Regional School District Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the school building and notice of said meeting sent to the New Jersey Herald and the Star-Ledger.
The Sussex Wanted Regional School District is a responsive, caring, child-centered community. Our mission is to educate each individual to become a competent, competent, lifelong learner and productive, responsible citizen by providing challenging opportunities in a safe environment through a partnership of families, schools, and communities.
All right, thank you. At this time, we will move on to the report of the superintendent of schools. Mr. Gall?
Thank you, Mr. DiAgostino. So just here again to present an update to the restart recovery plan for reopening schools in the form. As we kind of set the tone at the onset of these meetings, if everyone could just take a minute and put themselves on mute, that would be appreciated. At the onset of the meetings was that each subsequent meeting, we'd kind of release more details as we got more of a concrete understanding of, you know, what not only we would do, but how we coordinate with the regions and, you know, making sure to the degree we could, we'd be in alignment. So as promised, you'll have more details today about quote unquote "the plan," specifically the key elements that I think most people would probably be inquisitive about. I'm going to distinguish that from the actual written plan, which is more of a, you know, 62-page document that addresses a whole host of things, a couple of which we're still waiting for information about from various organizations. But that concrete document will go out to the board and committee members later this week in a draft form. So tonight, just talk a little bit about our, the meetings, what we have left, what we anticipate having left. You have an update on our regional discussions, plans, key elements, update on supplies that we've been acquiring, policy committee updates, some wellness committee updates, facilities update, technology update, what to expect next. So meetings, again, we've tried to engage a variety of stakeholder perspectives. As you can imagine, not everyone's always in agreement, but generally, there's a consensus around striving to be safe and, you know, how do you best do that? And I tried to set the tone that to start off cautiously, that that would be in our best interest to start quote unquote "safely." We tried to coordinate with our region to the greatest extent possible. Some schools are just in a unique situation where generally, they're much smaller and can do different things. And at this time, we have one more, we have a board meeting next week, the possibility we may do an additional kind of community outreach type meeting in August before our next August board meeting as well. So again, the regional mindset is primary focus on health and safety, kind of that secondary focus on social emotional learning. We've narrowed down, so I'm comfortable releasing at this point, phase one of the reopening. So again, a defined kind of small, soft opening to get everybody back into the routine, try to do it safely, specifically trying to reduce the group sizes in the school buildings, in the classrooms. So switching to an A/B schedule, which we talked about previously, group A would be Mondays and Thursdays, Wednesday would be all remote, group B would be Tuesday and Friday. That's consistent with most of the region to the, to the greatest extent possible. I don't speak for other school districts, but I'm comfortable saying that that's where we're at. The initial phase would be early dismissals, you know, follow-up question that people will have was how long is that going to go on for? And as you can imagine, there's a whole host of factors that would play into that decision. You know, I'll be looking at kind of the two-week timeframe to see where we're at, to see if I can make an announcement. You're collaborating with the Department of Health, you're looking at what the, the infection rates and the positive test rates in not just the state of New Jersey, but in our county would be, obviously, anything coming out from the governor's office. But if we can increase that to full days for those A and B groups, you know, that'd be something I'm, you know, obviously, we're, we're all want kids back in school as quickly as possible, but we want to do it safely. Assimilating both groups would be in, in additional phase, that would be further down the road. Right now, we're at the stage where we're currently aligning siblings, so C E L is, is pretty much complete, wanted schools almost there, middle school's working on that, they have a little bit of more uniqueness in their schedule, and we're begun specifically coordinating with High Point. And we're going to get together to share some information about that, to try to streamline things for parents and guardians. So what, what's the plan? You know, obviously, updates will be ongoing as, as we get some more information, but some important points, again, starting off slow with caution, the ultimate goals to transition back safely for that first phase during the alternating A/B schedule. This means that students will attend school live two days per week, have virtual instruction the remaining three days per week. First phase, again, early dismissal days, Wednesday's virtual learning, and during that time, that's an additional opportunity for, you know, part of this whole process, we have to enhance our cleaning routine. So that's just one more day where the custodial and maintenance staff can kind of do the work that's needed on the buildings. Parent guardian cooperation is going to be huge, you know, critical in all aspects of education, but it, for this circumstance, even more so, you know, a lot of questions have come up about, you know, what are the procedures going to look like for, you know, arriving at school and what do we do with students who present with illness or fevers? And I'm going to make the case that in theory, you know, that should never really happen, right? Because barring some, you know, unique circumstance, a child who's feeling ill or has a temperature, abnormal temperature, should be intercepted at home and not come to school. That would be an ideal circumstance. So we're going to ask parents to take the temperature of their children before school. Again, students who are ill or have a temperature above 100 degrees Fahrenheit should be kept home. For folks who will be used in transportation, buses, they're, to the greatest extent possible, you're reducing those groups almost in half. You're certainly trying to reduce them from the 54 number that can fit on a bus, so you're trying to accommodate some greater degree of social distancing, but it's understood that the bus is a unique environment, so whether you're at the bus stop, on the bus, face masks are required. Children arrive at school, temperatures will be taken prior to entering the building each day. Staff will be required to screen themselves before coming to work each day. There, there's a number of questions probably from staff about, you know, who's going to take those temperatures and things like that, so I'll talk a little bit about that in the next couple of slides. Nurses will have isolation areas for students who demonstrate symptoms of COVID-19, which is essentially, you know, respiratory symptoms. While they're away, parent pick up, you know, you, your, your child presents with a respiratory illness, they're going to be, you know, you're going to get a call to come and pick them up. Things like not changing for physical education during that initial phase reopening, that'll all be part of that process. So all staff and students be wearing face coverings to the greatest extent possible, and then a state's guidance says strongly encouraged, I'm going to take that a step further and say to the greatest extent possible. What, what do you mean by that, Mike? What I mean by that is that, yeah, you're going to be wearing a face mask, we're going to require that of you, with exception to, there may be an isolated number of staff and students who have a medical excuse saying that, you know, they have some sort of condition that a face mask can make, or a face covering can make their condition worse. And, and then they would be granted a, in a, in alignment with their medical note. Strongly suggested that staff utilize face shields. Visitors are not anticipated to have, have access to the buildings, but will be able to drop off items as necessary, things like, you know, parties and cupcakes and, as, as much as we love those things and, you know, consider them a part of a normal school process, we're going to have to discontinue at this time because unfortunately, it's not a normal school process. And, and the sole strategy right now is to try to prevent, you know, spreading of illness in schools. During the initial phase of reopening and all early dismissals, we're trying to reduce the notion during that time of lunch for students. That's a, a challenge, providing lunch in a school building because you have to remove your face masks to eat, and when you're doing that, you have to socially distance. So our cafeteria environments may not necessarily be conducive to accommodating those large number of kids in a socially distant fashion. So after we get over that initial phase, which again, in, in the best-case scenario, maybe two weeks, in, in, not as good a scenario would be, obviously, longer, but after that, if we can begin those lunch procedures, that would be ideal. It's probably unrealistic for folks, students, to go that, even though it's a half a day, that time without that. So a small snack may be permitted, you know, be isolated in the classroom. Update on facilities, so I've tried to be very cautious about the, the information I put out there about, you know, the various things that we've looked at, purchased. So I, for the most part, I only report on things that we've taken possession of, we've ordered a whole host of more items, but taken possession of various cleaning supplies, 3,000 surgical-grade masks for health offices primarily, three electric static disinfectant sprayers, that's the, looks like the trigger system, the white trigger system on the screen. And basically, what those are designed to do, they, they put in electric static charge on the, the material coming out of them, and it, you know, has a better clinging agent, I believe, to the, you know, desktop of the product that you're putting it on. It's not a substitute for cleaning, it's more of a supplement for cleaning, so in addition to. We have enough face shields for every staff member, and we just don't willy-nilly like go out and purchase the first thing we can get. We've been cautious about trying to try out products that we can get samples of. So I've worn, you know, the various ones that we had, had available to us for a couple of days, and the one that we got was the best we could get under the circumstances. It has, you know, we'd also purchased goggles for folks, in particular, working in the summer, and the goggles, when you wear the goggles in conjunction with your face mask, it just fogs up almost instantaneously, so those, those weren't a great option. And so this particular face shield that we purchased, you know, has the least amount of fog that we could get, and it's fairly sturdy, you may ask, you know, are you purchasing face shields for students? And we have some other options that we looked at for students, but I, I don't perceive that with the product that we have that, you know, there's any reliability that they wouldn't be damaged or discarded relatively quickly, so we did not. We got the gallon-sized jugs of hand sanitizer for every class, and that's when, you know, you really couldn't get your hands on hand sanitizer, but we had started meeting about coronavirus when it was really still in China. And so we were getting our ducks in a row about different things and different supplies and that nature, so we had to lead on certain things. We also got three wall-mounted, hands-free thermometers per school, and that's what you see in the image below the electric static disinfectant sprayer. It has the number, numeric readout on it. Basically, we took possession of those, they're very cost-effective. You know, you see online, they're trying to market, you know, $3,000 devices that look like iPads, for lack of a better description, and no, those just weren't, didn't seem realistic for schools, so we, we got a line on these, Ms. Armstrong, in our facilities office, and they were, you know, I want to say $99 each or thereabouts, and we tried them out, and thus far, they worked very well, you know, they recognize when, you know, an object comes in front of it and it scans your forehead and prints out a reliable number when compared to a handheld. So we also have three handhelds per school, in addition to these, just to supplement that, these are either rechargeable battery-operated, or they can be plugged in an outlet, depending upon where you position them in the school. So the vision would be, if these hold true, that the staff member would just kind of oversee the students' self-check-in, maybe with a little kid assist in that process. But again, thus far, they're working fairly well. And there's a whole host of other materials on order that I'll report out at, on when we take possession of them. So, you know, just thinking about this slide and the procedures and the different things that I've discussed, one of the help, more helpful things that you, any parents that are watching could probably do is just to prepare your children for, for the process that, you know, school's going to look a little different than they're accustomed to or, or maybe they've never been exposed to, and we're going to try to help you as best we can with some orientation-type videos and things of that nature, but, you know, it's, it's probably discerning to some of you, but again, these are in a lot, these processes are in alignment with what the road back to restarting schools from the state came out, and, you know, from around the country or around the world, different practices that schools put in place to try to reopen. Policy and funding update, so Strauss Esme is, I've talked about previously, they're a policy provider, so they're a firm of attorneys and former education officials who basically monitor things like changing laws and administrative code and things that come out from the Department of Education, and they craft policies so that school districts can adopt them and be in compliance with whatever the respective law is or code is. So we got a policy update from Strauss Esme concerning coronavirus and different aspects of things that you need to implement. So the policy committee meant, we kind of reviewed some of those things, had the opportunity to some degree weigh in, we talked about some other areas. Curriculum is going to be a huge critically important part of not just the A/B schedule for as long as we need to do it, but for remote instruction. One of the things that the state has said is that, you know, you need to be in a position to be able to quote-unquote, from the governor pivot on a dime, to go back into a remote scenario. So, you know, last year was basically a giant pilot process, and we learned about a lot of things that worked well, some things that didn't work well, and so, one of Mrs. Stimalakis' is our curriculum director's focus, curriculum committee, and the board as a whole, in collaboration with the teachers, is to try to enhance that process to the greatest degree possible. So board policy committee would like to, to like to brainstorm some firm guidelines for remote instruction policy. That corresponds to the curriculum committee's goal of enhancing the delivery of remote instruction. So you may ask, you know, Mike, what do you think the reality of, you know, the whole circumstance is? Are we going to be in school? We're not going to be in school? Well, I can tell you from this perspective is that right now, we're being told that at this time, we need to be prepared to open school for some version of onsite instruction, and that's where a lot of districts you see doing A/B days or half-days or whatever they're doing. Is it out of the realm of possibility that we're going to need to do remote instruction as a whole district? You know, I don't want to discourage, it sounds discouraging in any way, but it's possible. So it's something that we really need to hone and really need to prepare for, not just increasing expectations for staff and providing them with more professional development, but increasing expectations for students as well. There's a checklist that's anticipated to continue to come out from the NJ DOE. That's something that you use when you submit it to the county to just go through your plan and make sure you have all the pieces that they're looking for, so that hasn't come out yet, been a couple of weeks, but, you know, hopefully, it'll come out before plans are officially due to the county, and we, we're anticipating cross-referencing those things. We're waiting on some specific elements from the Sussex County Department of Health. I've mentioned before that one of the things that we talk about in the superintendent meetings from around the county is, it would, I think it would be meaningful to stakeholders, parents, teachers, students to some degree, to just have an understanding of what to expect when a school has a scenario where it's reported that either someone has coronavirus or someone is suspected of having coronavirus, somebody came in contact with somebody else who had coronavirus, you know, what is, what are we supposed to do? And the county wants to be able to do the same thing. All the superintendents want to say that this is, you know, what we have to do, and we're all being consistent. So the Sussex County Health Department, under the leadership of Jim McDonald, has been very supportive in that endeavor, and they've put together a nice little chart, basically depicting, I think it's three or four scenarios, and, you know, what their procedure would be and how to, how the school should respond and what we can do to help. So at this stage of the game, they've reviewed that with us, we've given some feedback on it, and what they're trying to do now is they're trying to take their procedures and coordinate them with other counties. So they reached out to Bergen, I know they reached out to Warren, I think they reached out to Huntington, just so there can be some kind of assimilation between the counties or just to double-check themselves, you know, are you doing something that we're not doing? So I would anticipate, once that process is done and they turn that document over to the school district, we'll not only include it in our plan, but we'll release it to the community, because I think I've said this before, that if the expectation of stakeholders and the state of New Jersey is that school districts, us, we can put in a, a plan to enhance the safety of everyone in our schools and our facilities and respond appropriately should we have an unfortunate circumstance concerning coronavirus, I think 100% we, we can do that. But if the expectation is that schools can prevent the spread of a virus or an illness, you know, in, in my judgment, I'm not trying to dissuade anybody, but being realistically, I don't, I don't, I think that's a little unrealistic. So if we have this document in place, everybody knows what to expect, you can prepare for it appropriately. Conditions for learning, I don't know if Mrs. Wilson's on the line, I don't think we had any updates. Mrs. Wilson, are you there?
Yes, I am here, Mr. Gall.
Do you have any updates for wellness?
Um, yes, actually, I met with the, um, the nurses today, actually, I met with all the, the subcommittees today, and then I will be meeting with subcommittees again next week, and the wellness group as a whole. The, the one thing that we discussed, that I discussed with the nurses was there was a county, there was a meeting for the nurses yesterday with the county health, public health department, and basically, all of the nurses in the area had put together a document with like 50 questions that they had wanted clarification on, and even though the document was provided in advance, unfortunately, they were not able to get any answers. I guess the, the public health people are, are planning on consulting with, and I'm going to say this wrong, epididym-
Epidemiologist.
Yeah, him. So anyway, after they do the consultation, then they will answer the nurses' questions and submit the, the, hopefully, they'll get access to that document.
So if I could just expand on that topic real briefly, so what, what I want people to understand who's viewing this is, very often, the organizations that we turn to for clarification or information, they're in a position where they sometimes need to then turn to their parent organization or another organization to get some clarification that they, about an issue, and that's how the information's kind of been filtering down to us. The other thing I want to point out is that, in addition to the nurses' meeting with the county, the nurses and the superintendent, the nurses requested a meeting, they're, they have an organization in the county, and the superintendent organization is going to meet with the nurses' organization to try and, you know, share information face-to-face, so to speak, and clarify each other's questions or concerns to the degree we can, and if I can point out for our community, I've had the opportunity to work with all of our nurses currently in the district, even Mrs. Carroll, who'll be coming on board for Mrs. Fisher, and, you know, as far as nurses in schools that I've worked with, I want you to have an understanding that they're just extraordinary people, both personally and professionally. And I have no doubt that there's nobody better we can have for this circumstance to help us through it than these folks.
Agreed, Mr. Gall. They're, they're very knowledgeable, and they're really, really working very hard to try and get these policies and procedures in place, and, you know, once they get the additional guidance, I think, because from, for the most part, I think there are really good outlines and, and procedures that are tentatively in place, but, you know, our hands are kind of tied right at the moment because we want to just make sure that they're in align with what the expectations are. So and upon, in addition to that, I guess the state nurses, School Nurses Association will also be releasing a COVID restart toolkit, and the nurses are hoping to receive that by the end of this week. But in the meantime, the one thing that they are doing is, they've started putting together staff training on the guidelines and the procedures, which is also state-mandated, but, so they're, they're in the process of developing that so that, you know, make sure that everybody feels confident and secure and has some certainty in confidence in what they're doing, you know, to maintain safety and hopefully stop the spread. Other trainings that we're also working on is putting together a what-to-expect slide presentation for students and parents. Essentially, there'll be three different presentations, you know, because, I mean, obviously, in the Lawrence School presentation, to try and explain social distancing, one of the resources I found was a video that's sort of like Baby Shark, except it's about focal distancing. I apologize to parents in advance because once you hear it and it gets in your head, you can't get it out. So I, I apologize a lot, but obviously, the Baby Shark song would not be appropriate for the middle school. So, you know, we're trying to make developmentally appropriate, you know, presentations pending on the needs of the children and the parents. And then, yeah, the council has really been working very hard at putting together a mindfulness, self-care, self-compassion, resiliency resource for the staff, you know, to try and, you know, again, help them do the best they can be and reduce their anxiety so that we can do their best for our children. So that's all I have for this week, but thank you.
Thank you. Continuity of learning, I think, Mrs. Stimalakis, are you with us?
Yes, so we met with building-based committees on Thursday, and then earlier today, we discussed professional development needs for both educators and families. We will be sending a survey out to staff members this week to begin gathering feedback as to which professional development opportunities are being requested. Our goal is to bring in a hybrid teaching guru of some sort, and also use ourselves as the specialists and instruct our peers in areas of personal expertise. I've already had a few people discuss that they would provide to me in various aspects of virtual teaching and learning, so continuing to expand upon it and utilizing screen-recorded technologies so that these trainings, trainings can potentially be made available to teachers and community, to all people in the community members. We also are refining future expectations for virtual and hybrid learning environment. Expectations is a word that has consistently come up since March 13th, this is nothing new. The idea of a parent paradigm of teachers, students, and parents working collaboratively with the best interest of the child at heart. That goal is the same, but within a new environment as we're becoming more familiar, that we're becoming more familiar with daily. Our expectation will serve as a guide for shared accountability for instruction and interaction, so we are in the process of creating building-based expectations to be disseminated to stakeholders with the ultimate goal of enhanced student learning through supporting the child, the teacher, and the family.
Thank you, Ms. Stimalakis. So what to expect next? Again, I said that the actual, the, the document plan that you submit to the state is about 62 pages, it'll be posted on our website, but, but at this juncture, we'll send it off to the committee members and the board later this week. We're, we're refining our class lists. We're, we're refining our class lists, uh, again, to coordinate between siblings. We'll put that out earlier than our typical, you know, we usually send out class placement letters, uh, mid-August, second or third week in August, and we're going to move that up significantly, the best we can to get that out for you because I know once you hear A B, you want to know what was my child A or B. Um, and there's a couple of different wheels in motion to coordinate, so we will try to get that out to you as soon as possible. Uh, the remote learning models, which are critical, again, um, I don't think that there's, you know, I haven't spoken to anybody in, in a parent teacher or education administration capacity who feels that remote learning is a positive endeavor. I mean, you may try to make it as positive as possible, but there's no substitute for students coming to school. It's just not a reality, in my opinion. And that's coming from somebody who taught hybrid models at the college level as an adjunct. So our goal again is to get everybody in school the quickest we can, but it's got to be the safest we can. Again, we're waiting certain specifics from the county department of health, namely that, you know, chart of protocols and procedures about just what to expect if staff, students, someone becomes ill. And we want to put that out to you in advance of school. Uh, certain specifics from the NJ DOE that we, we passed up the food chain, so to speak, to the county superintendent that we feel like the road back plan didn't necessarily cover. Um, so we asked for some clarification about those things. We're also at the suggestion of Mr. Hayden, it was either last week or the week before that. You know, district physician has been a part of, you know, various aspects of the process, in, in particular, working with the nursing staff and some of the questions they have, but bringing him more and more Dr. Markle into the conversation. Um, we're reaching out regarding, you know, I've asked the nurses to coordinate professional development experience about health and safety, but if he can join us for that, um, you know, report out, that would be great. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Gall, I was curious if we'd be able to do, I, I think you mentioned it briefly in the beginning of the meeting, but uh, do a, an in-person, um, sort of community forum in, in the beginning of August to answer any questions the public might have.
Yeah, so I think that's probably an appropriate next step in the process, you know, board committee gets the draft document. Um, inevitably submit that for approval. We posted on our website, we give, give a couple of weeks for everybody to digest it. Um, come back to us, you know, in between there, it's kind of a living document to some extent, we may refine one aspect of it or get get some of that information we're waiting for or clarification we're waiting for to assimilate into that document. You know, I don't know if mid-August sounds right. I would put a deadline then too. Um, no pressure on Mrs. Demilakis, but you know, I'm basically putting pressure on Mrs. Demilakis to work with those curriculum folks in, in the notion of, you know, let's have a presentation for the community by then as well. So let's, if we can shoot for mid-August about, you know, how we enhance that remote learning process, both on a hybrid aspect, because you're talking about two different, you know, two different, really, you're talking about the A B function for, you know, again, hopefully it's as narrow as we, we can possibly have, but then you're also talking about, you know, the likelihood that you may have to transition to a full remote process. And, you know, as you can imagine, teachers, board members, parents, stakeholders. I was in a meeting today, I've been in a couple of other meetings where, you know, folks have a lot of feedback. Um, a lot of very legitimate questions and concerns that you, you can bring to those committees that we can, you know, duke out.
Absolutely. So if it's mid-August, do you, do you think the, I guess it would be either the 12th or the 19th. Um, does anyone on the administration or board have any suggestions as far as what might be a good date? Out of those two, the, uh, 12th or 19th?
I think the 12th would be better. I know that even-
Agreed, the sooner the-
That puts more pressure on Kaylee, but I think the sooner, the, the better, like Ken just said.
Absolutely. Um, so if that works for everybody, um, let's pencil that in for August 12th. Let's do in, in person. I think it's important to-
Oh yeah, I'm sorry to comment on that. I, I, I'm sorry I neglected to comment on that, but I, you know, at this juncture, I'm totally comfortable with in-person, you know, obviously if there's someone who's not for one reason or another, we can make accommodation for you. But I think that, you know, it's not realistic to expect everyone to come to school in September, but we're still having remote meetings in August, so it's a good, it's a good transition time.
Exactly. Mr. Bress, um, do you know the current, um, of the, how many people we could have? Is it, is there capacity rules regarding public meetings?
Um, my understanding, I think it's still 50, not to exceed. I have to look at the percentages, but it hasn't changed since the last time it was expanded.
Okay.
Yeah, so we would look to have that, you know, in Sussex Middle School, either in the, uh, you know, auditorium or gymnasium like you did prior to closure.
Thank you.
So are you opening board members now, or is there another, are, are we going to be having like old business or new business?
I think the, the floor would be open now. I don't, I don't think we have any older, new business. So yeah, this is time for discussion.
Okay, so I'll start. I guess in the past two days, um, we had the teachers, head of the teachers union talk out and basically say that schools are safe to open in September. That's coming from the head of the teachers union, if I'm correct.
Yeah, if I, if I can just make a clarification, Mr. Nuss, can you? If I can make a clarification, you're referring to the state organization, right?
Correct.
It was, yeah. It was.
Yes. Yeah, and then you have Murphy, um, offering parents the ability to have their kids remain at home and have remote instruction offered by the school. So I think we're doing a really great job with regards to preparing for the physical aspects of returning to school. But want to make sure we're not putting our kids in a situation where September comes around and we're not prepared to be offering that remote instruction if people choose to take it. And I, I honestly, I, I, I think we need to have guidelines and expectations from teachers. And I, I really think we need to open up that discussion because what is it going to look like? You know, most of the, the taxes that people pay are for, um, salaries and benefits. And we need to be able to ensure that our kids are getting instruction. They're not getting assignments. And, um, you know, a check in mid-week and then a review of homework. Like I, 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 I don't know where, I'm just trying to start the discussion because I want to make sure we're able to offer instruction the best way possible. And, you know, I'd like to get other people's thoughts.
Ken, we- Ken, this is Ross Giuliano. I am thoroughly a hundred percent with you. I am extremely concerned that we are not going to be ready for remote learning. And, and teachers are going to block and say, I don't want to be on camera with, I believe we need to say that's nonsense. I mean, at my job, I can't say I don't want to fly to California and do a presentation. I would be fired. Goodbye. So I, I, I really am passionate about the fact that if these teachers don't want to teach in front of our camera, you, you know, there has to be some kind of guideline, procedure, and it's got to, this is what it is. Because I really feel based on the head of the teachers union, state teachers union, uh, his comments, I think there's going to be a lot of remote learning. I think more than we're prepared for. I think, I don't even think the first week of school is going to kick off, to be honest. I think they're gonna, Murphy's going to turn around and say, you know what, let's push it off a month or two and then we're not going to be ready.
We have said not, it's not just the teachers that have to okay the cameras in the classroom. Um, the parents would have to too, and I myself would never sign off on my student, my child being recorded or on camera.
No, I'm talking about fully remote. I'm not talking about kids on camera at all.
Right, but you have to understand that as a, as an educator, now I am on every day. I do E S Y, stood a school year in Vernon, and I am on, in, in front of my kids every day. However, we are part of a teachers union. And the teachers union says you can't force a teacher to be you know, in front of a camera. They could do other things like screen testify or, uh, I think some, we were talking, we have been, I'm telling you right now, as the head of the curriculum, I have been busting my butt and everywhere along with the teachers and the administrators and Miss Telemet, um, Kaylee, I can never pronounce your last name. But we have been busting, I've been, today I've spent three hours with Clifton, Lawrence, Wantage and Sussex Middle School. We have been planning, this has been going on all month of July. We are going to be going, and Megan too, Megan's been in there, Jenny's been in there. We have been busting our butts. And so I know that that really hasn't been brought out to the board and I apologize for that, but we are ready. We are ready to on a dime go for, go from in-person to remote. Now, March 13th, I couldn't say that. And I couldn't say that. I mean, Ken and I have had conversations about it, but I think that we were not prepared for what was about to happen. But I, I think that you have to trust in the committee that we are, we are ready and we are going to be able to, to, to just, you know, turn on a dime and do remote learning.
And how- Well, I, I appreciate all your work, I do. I, I am not, uh, of course pushing that aside and saying nobody's doing any work on it.
Right, of course.
It's new to me, I haven't heard that. But it, it is a concern and if you're ready to go, that's great to hear. If you've got alternatives to cameras, that's money. Just as long as I, you know, you feel you're ready to go, that's fantastic.
Mr. Bress, yes?
Yes, if I could just speak about the NJA's position on teachers' ability or inability to be in front of a camera. In the beginning, uh, I want to say mid-March when they were initially issuing guidance, they conceded that teachers can be video recorded for purposes of remote instruction. And there is a dispute, and I think the NJA's position may be that they don't want their teachers to be reported, but that does not mean necessarily that they cannot be. I think this is a discussion for administration. These are discussions that definitely they should be had with union representatives. But I don't think that necessarily just because the NJA right now is saying that they prefer that the teachers are not reported or that they're against something, that doesn't mean that that option is off the table completely. Um, the board, you do have an obligation to educate your students and make sure that they're getting a free, thorough, efficient public education. And, you know, you hire teachers to perform a job of particular service and ensuring that instruction is delivered. So that is a further conversation that needs to be ongoing. I just want to make sure that just because the NJA is making certain public statements or, you know, they are holding certain positions, doesn't mean that all of a sudden that the Board of Education is absolutely prohibited and now denied the opportunity from exploring alternate options which may or may not include live streaming. So I just want to clarify-
Thank you for answering.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Every day, but every hour there's a change, right, Francis?
Oh my God, tell me about it. Even with the T D C, between one day and the next, like, oh wait, there's something new. Oh no, they changed that. Oh.
Right.
Yeah, and kind of, I understand how much time you're putting into it with the curriculum committee. I just, like, I'm, I'm trying to express my fears now because there's so many parents that experience not, no communication with their teachers. None, no, no outreach for months.
Right.
And if you tell me you're ready to go, then I say, great, but I also want to know what the expectations are. Like, we need to have expectations. In my eyes, my, like, if we're fully remote and you and I have had this discussion, in a perfect scenario, again, everything we worked out, because I, I don't, I didn't think of something that Megan brought to my attention today, but I would like to see teachers keeping their class as though their schedule is there in a remote situation. So if they have seven periods, they're logging into their computer and teaching their class. And if you don't want your child to, um, be heard or seen and we're doing it remotely, I guess you can just put the child on mute. Um, and I don't know, I get, you know, all things to think about, but I, I feel we need to be having that discussion because the last thing I want is for Murphy to come around on August 28th or 29th and say, you're remote.
Right, right.
And do you know what I'm saying? Like, I want to know then Monday through Friday, my kid, remote, is having class. Now whether or not I can sit with him for those, you know, whatever, maybe a condensed four-hour day or I can review that half-hour class that the teacher put together, that lesson at night with my kid, I should have that availability. And I'm just afraid we're not at that point. So if we are, great.
We, we are, because and today, even today, we have, and, um, Kaylee, you can, you can of course chime in anytime, but, um, we've talked about expectations and maybe Kaylee, you wanted to share that out with the board. Some of our different expectations. We have, uh, student expectations, parent expectations and teacher expectations, things that we as the committee feel are important.
You, Kaylee, can you just give us a, a brief synopsis of your conversation? And then down the road, we can present that full in, in its entirety, but also I don't know if it'd be meaningful if we could have the opportunity, maybe if Mr. Daggas stepping aside for a meeting since, um, you know, Mr. Nuss, Mr. Giuliano, or, you know, have a, have a perspective on the issue, maybe one of them could join, you know, um, in upcoming meeting just to not only share it, but listen in. You know, the more, more perspectives in my opinion, better.
I would, yeah, I would love to, I would love to have either one of them, you know, sit in my place for-
Yeah, I, I, I didn't mean to cut you out. I mean, if somebody else can, that's up to-
I mean, because Jenny, Jenny has been on last week and, and, uh, today. And she called me and she said that it was eye-opening for her. And she's not on here, but, um, she did tell me that, you know, she really appreciated be, being able to hear and to see all the work that we've done. So absolutely, if one of those two guys want to come on next week on the 29th, it's our last real, um, committee meeting with all the different, um, schools. And, um, by all means, come on.
Sure, I, I love it. And I have a question. So when you say you're ready to go, if we flip a switch, what are, like, when are we going to give the parents? Or, or when are we going to know, like, okay, we're going to have Monday through Friday class and the teachers are going to be keeping their, their flat, like, when is that going to be shared or discussed with the board? Because I still want to, I, I, you know what I'm saying? Like, when are we going to know a plan?
Well, I would imagine that would be part of the, part of the reopening plan, correct, Mr. Gall? So that-
Right.
All these things will be in the, what we get with the board, so by the end of the month?
Yeah, well, the, 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 uh, though, like, if it's going to come to me and before it goes to the state, I'm, I'm assuming all of us nine board members are going to have say in it. Like, I'm not going to be happy just being told this is what I'm submitting to the state.
No, I would say-
I know there's that timeframe to it. Just clarify, the reopening plan has a whole host of things, you know, I don't want to say unrelated to what you're talking about, but, um, you know, in more specific areas. So the, the reopening plan have that general frame, framework of your A B schedule. The, um, the notion of what that, what, what instruction looks like, that conversation will continue in a curriculum meeting. Yeah, I don't want you to get, get stuck on the sense that, you know, I, I wouldn't say you're fully ready, um, because there's a whole host of things that go into that, you know, teacher training, uh, which, you know, nobody comes back until September. Um, so if we could facilitate some of that over to someone, that'd be great. But Mrs. Demilakis has actually been working on a model paradigm since the, since last year. So much of that, when, when, when she says ready, is ready to be rolled out in the sense that she can do that. Uh, but I would want you all to see that and chime in on that over those smaller subcommittees before you roll that out to, to the general public.
I think Mrs. Demilakis, um, emailed last week's minutes, if I'm not mistaken, um, to the board, but, you know, I'm sure the board will also get the minutes. Um, Mrs. Demilakis, would you like to give a brief synopsis or just your input on this discussion at all regarding expectations?
Absolutely. And, and yes, I will be, um, emailing the minutes as well. Um, but yes, so we have a conversation in each of the buildings um, for the expectations of students, of families and of teachers, um, working together collaboratively in the best interest of the student. Specifically, we're speaking about, um, upholding the Google classrooms. We're, what a virtual learning, what a virtual learning platform will look like, a solely virtual learning platform, what professional development will look like. What professional development will look like and um what teaching expectations will be. Um we have not come to um a decision on if if teachers will be videotaped live, like um some of the discussion has been. Um we're working on areas to make our learning, our teaching and instruction accessible um to all students. Both um in-person learners and virtual learners. And I'll share out the minutes and.
No, yeah, I was gonna ask the um, so we're starting back with the AB schedule. Um how are we handling the kids with special needs that really need to get caught up? Um, you know, like, is there any plan in place to um get them? More time.
I I'm sorry, I understand what you're saying. This is Wilson and I have convers- have had conversations where some districts are looking to. You know, if you're doing AB and students are live twice a week, you're um, you're trying to bring in. So in particular, self-contained classrooms more frequently, so say potentially four or five days a week. And I just don't have that comfort level just yet, but again, on my timeframe for looking to assess the situation to make some sort of conversion. Not just with full day, but with special needs students, in particular self-contained students, is that a week interval mark?
Can I, can I just say something? Part of the process, as soon as we get the students back in in the building. Um even on a part-time basis is we we've got to start assessing them and finding out where they are. And then once we know where they are, then we certainly can come up with individualized plans. Because I'm not gonna say, I don't think a one-size-fits-all is going to work for regression recruitment. So I think we're really gonna have to look at the needs and come up with individualized plans. Um but definitely, um one of the things Mrs. Demilakis and I were discussing was. Um, you know, how we can expedite the assessment process, not just for the special ed students, but for everyone. Because it's, we're gonna have a lot of students who have had a slide. Or like the students who were at risk that weren't, you know, were getting interventions and were holding their own with the interventions. But um, you know, may have had, um because of the lack of interventions while we were closed. You know, may need a little bit more. So we're definitely prioritizing. And we're going to assess as quickly and as thoroughly as possible. And then we're gonna have to come up with individualized plans and we may have to revise IEPs. So um but definitely, that's that's a high priority for for me and for the special ed students and the students who are currently getting, you know, BSI, RTI. All of those services.
Thank you. Mr. Nuss, did you have anything further on this that you'd like to discuss?
Um, let me just say. So I know we talked about professional uh development um and getting like a guru in here to. You know, maybe help teachers get more accustomed to working in front of a computer. Um, what is, what, I guess the question would be for Francis. When is the earliest that teachers can be um asked to uh partake in professional development? Prior to the school year starting? That's a contractual issue, I'm assuming?
Yeah, it's gonna be within the the confines of the contract, so when their work year begins, essentially.
Okay, so that's an, I guess that would be another um concern if we have to wait till school opens. Before we. Offer, I mean, is there any way to put something together? If like, like a, like a short video that can give some helpful hints to teachers? Because like I said, what if we start school or, you know, a couple of days before school, we're told we have to go remote? And, you know, some teachers may want to take an hour or two beforehand. I mean, I don't care, paying them for it is not an issue. Um I just, I just, I don't have a good feeling with the way. Stuff has been called um by the governor and I I I don't want to have the kids. Get the blunt of it. So is there anything that we can do to maybe help? Teachers that may want to take a, like a, you know, time in advance to. Help prepare, you know?
Yeah, so a couple of things. One, you're you're gonna get that information to them out as soon as the curriculum folks, the administration, the board. Just, you know, finalize that model. This way, just as your summer routine, not that you have to, but you might reflect on that, pick that up. And, you know, I'm gonna tell you that every teacher's going to, you know, whether they're on our premises or not, they're gonna be looking at that, talking about it. Um if if for not only a another reason, just to ask these questions about it. Um, the second thing is that like Mrs. Demilakis said, we want to compensate. Um, you know, in a job posting for select folks to come in and help finalize that process through a planning phase. To be able to turnkey that to their colleagues. Um because, you know, very often colleagues look to their peers as experts in the area. Have a lot of respect for them, right? So if you see someone you know doing it, it it has a better chance of, you know, achieving takeoff. But we can't pay, we can't create, like, we can't offer something. Prior to school starting, if anybody wants to take advantage of it. Yeah, we would have to work that through our uh with our, work that out with our business administrator and.
Now, can um, just to clarify, if we're going to that single, like you said, the half-day um model. Uh the teachers also have the flexibility in the afternoon to plan, correct?
Yes, yes. Well, again, that initial phase where I'm, you know, please don't hold me to two weeks. But that's where my mind is looking at for the threshold, straight half-days. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of pros to that scenario. There's a lot of cons, you know, in particular childcare. Um, you know, kids eating, the whole, that whole piece that we, you know, when you're trying to do it cautiously and safety, there're gonna be certain things that we can't. Help with. Um but one of the pros is that there's time in the afternoon. Um to where there's consideration, um they can review things, um they can work with their colleagues. They can, uh, you know, some contractual obligations will be met, those kinds of things. But yeah, good point.
Could I ask a question?
Of course, Mr. Up.
Um, I'm gonna dovetail what Mr. Nuss said with his concern about. Um, at a moment's notice, we will have to know if we're gonna go totally remote. Well, at this moment's notice, we know that we're going to go at least fifty percent remote. And um closer to, well, if we take three out of uh, out of the five-day weeks. Where where we're going, um. Uh, we're we're going uh sixty percent remote. Now, we should already be in a position to, to hone our um virtual learning. Um, not only our expectations that Mr. Nuss is concerned about and I'm concerned about too, because we both. Um, as parents of kids in the district during the end of last year, have our concerns with. Um, you know, uh the the faculty and the parents too, having um. Uh, not only the teachers need professional development, the parents also need to be prepared. To aid their students and aid our staff in 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 how to be successful with this model of learning. And um we have to also not just prepare the the staff, which is very important. We have to also prepare the parents. Um because this time going back, it's not gonna be a closed society. We're gonna have some children who are gonna be left with caregivers who didn't experience this at all. Um, we're gonna have um some left with siblings that that have never had this issue before. Because hopefully, I hope to God, a lot of these folks are gonna be back to work and contributing to our economy. Um, we need to, just like Mr. Dust just said, and and uh. Um, we need to know that this, this, this virtual learning is being enhanced. To the best capability we can, because even if we're not opening, even if we are opening. Uh um as we're planning, it's still a a a lynchpin to to how our success is gonna be. I'm sorry.
Now, and going off again with Bob is saying, Murphy is giving families the option. To do remote learning a hundred percent. So I can't fathom. Ten families already saying, I'm gonna do this, which would mean we'd have to be ready to go from day one. And I know I'm playing devil's advocate, but I am not happy with the way things went last year. Um, with the assigning of homework and the stress that families went through to get homework done. And then all the family had to do was call and and um, you know, express their concern. And homework would be alleviated for that child. But what about all those families that didn't want to complain or or say something? They struggled and took hours and and created stress for themselves. And there was no instruction. Granted, it was then. I just cannot and will not accept. A lack of instruction from the teachers this year. So I don't know how much more clear I could be. Um, you know, and I wish everyone, I, most people have spoken. I don't know if anyone that hasn't. You know, feel free to mention your thoughts, but I think we all have to get this out and we need to have a full dial going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde.
I'd I'd like to, I'd like to add too, what I'm looking for is greater support for not only the staff. But also the families and and like Mr. Nuss just said, um, you know, that there was, there was a lot of extra stress. And 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 like I tried to say, we're gonna have um possibly a lot less parent participation. Due to the fact that they're going to be back uh in the economy working. Um, we need to have not only to plan professional development and support for the teachers, but also for the parents and the families. Um and the other thing that we need to take into consideration, I'm sure you all have already taken this into consid- consideration. A lot of these children are emotionally um. Um weakened. Fragile is a better word. Um and um, uh as a, as a parent, I myself need help. With regards to supporting my own child and it's never been about my own child, but I know that I am not alone in this need. And and it's a critical need. So the families need to be brought in as part of this team. Uh, not only for the, for the, for the uh virtual learning that I said this week. But they also have to be brought into the fold by professional medical people to understand. The 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 safety and security that we are going to provide them when they come back to school. And they need to hear it from medical personnel. They don't need to hear it from, uh and and I appreciate everything's, everybody's been doing. The superintendent or the business administrator. We need to hear this from, and and the staff does too. Because we have people on the board, people who are parents, people who are um staff members for sure. That have come into face-to-face contact with these kids, that they are going to be provided with a safe learning environment. And a a an environment that's gonna keep our community safe.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, Mrs. Woody, did you want to jump in with this?
Um. I I was really just gonna say that I I'm in full agreeance with a lot that I, that was just said. Um, I think my biggest thing is. Is to uh that, I I just feel it, I don't want to say that we're behind, but I mean, I feel as though uh we can't just start in September. We we have to, you know, the teachers, the parents, that I feel that we need to get going on this before September. Um, I know like Kenny Nessit said something about uh, you know, possibly paying staff. Um, whatever has to be done, we can't, we can't wait until, um, I don't know what the first day of school is. But let's say it's a Tuesday after Labor Day. We can't wait until one-thirty that afternoon when the kids go home to um, after the first day. To to figure out what's going on or what's gonna work best or to share their ideas. Um, I I, I am on a lot of meetings also. And uh, a lot of the people that are on the meetings are um the best of the best that we have in the district. Um. But but not all of them are in meetings. Um. So so it's tough. Uh, but I I feel something has to be done before September. Um. It to to whether whether teachers need to be paid, whether uh the public needs to be more aware. How we can get them more involved uh to know how things or how we're going to try our best to get things to work the best they can. And what the expectations are. And we kind of can't wait until September, I don't think, for this. I think when we do go, no matter how we walk in the first day of school, I think that there's gonna be a lot of obstacles. That none of us probably could have predicted. So we're gonna have to deal with that too. Um, so I I just hope that we can get a better grip on as much as we can before school starts.
Thank you, Mrs. Woody. Thank you, everybody, for your concerns, your questions and the comments. Um, it's clear that the safety of the kids is, is uh the of the utmost importance. And you know, I think that comes across in everything the board and the administration and teachers are all saying. Does anyone have any um questions, concerns about this or other aspects of the presentation that Mr. Goll gave us tonight?
I have a question for Mike, actually. Has anyone reached out to you and expressed interest in sending their kids remote? Like, I mean, I I talk to people periodically. Most people want everything to work out where the kids can go back. But has anyone said they're not sending their kids yet?
Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, at this juncture, I think everybody's um primary goal would be just to come to school, right? Like, this whole thing, ABs, the, they're starting off slow, like, this is, this is more of a challenge for us than just saying, hey, we're gonna start school. Right? Like, we'd all rather love to do that. You are gonna find that there'll be a percentage of people, you know, I'm not comfortable saying what the percentage would be right now. Just because I don't have a handle on it. Um but who are, who are apprehensive about, you know, not just coming to school. But putting their child in soccer camp or um all sorts of those kinds of things. So we will have that. Um. And I, and I think that that's just a personal choice, you know?
Right, and the point is, you you're sure we're gonna have that. It's why we need to have the, you know, like a a s- something set in stone. Now.
Oh, yeah, hundred percent. Um, but I don't, I don't know if there's anything that we are gonna say or do with respect to making them comfortable coming to school. I think most of those folks, you know, I can't speak for them, but probably are looking more for, you know, ideas like vaccines. And um, you know, elimination of coronavirus in society. I would, I would just make that assumption. I could be wrong.
Well, I've heard several people tell me that they're not sending their kids to school because their kids are not gonna want to wear masks, for one. And they're just scared.
Yeah.
As people in the supermarkets that are talking and people that you see, remember, place, different place you go, doctor's office and stuff like that. And that's what they're saying. They're so worried about it.
Yeah.
The little ones, there's no way, the little ones are gonna keep a mask on and they're too concerned about that.
Yeah, and on the other extreme, there's um, you know, folks who who would send them to school tomorrow and no, no questions asked. They want to, you know, get back to normal and and probably don't perceive coronavirus to be as significant as other people might. Um, you know, as I mentioned about the masks, the um, the no- the notion is, again, during your initial phase. Um, yeah, absolutely, we're gonna require you to wear a mask greatest extent possible, with exception to, you know, you're gonna have people have medical notes. For whatever reason their condition is, that that they can't, the the mask or the face covering would make their condition worse, so we can't require it. Um, and there's some inherent ideas, like, you know, the very little kids, um, you know, it it'll be challenged. So like, you know, that's an understanding, you know? Uh, the the state roadmap also makes certain concessions for things like um. You know, if you're in extreme heat, you don't necessarily have to wear the mask if you can appropriately socially distance. You know, if you're running a marathon, you shouldn't wear a mask type thing. Um, if you're swimming, you know, we don't have to worry about that problem. But um years ago, summer care, we had summer care, they used to go up the lake, um Stoke State, uh. Up at High Point. Um and and you wouldn't have them wear a mask in the water, though. up at High Point, and, and you wouldn't have them wear a mask in the water, those kinds of things.
It's pretty, any way to maybe have a day or two of a possible trial of the virtual and see how it's gonna work, you know, like one day.
I love that idea.
Yeah. Well, so you, I mean, you're gonna start that in some capacity at the onset of the school year because again, there's that, the A day and the B day, and then you have the Wednesday where, where there's, you know, everybody all remote. But part of the notion of the remote learning is the devices, right? So those first couple of days of school, you're rolling out the devices. They don't even have them yet. But I think when Mrs. Demilakis gives that presentation, she could kinda walk you through, you know, a segment can be a day in the life of. And then any trainings that we're able to do beforehand, that would get people acclimated, especially folks who, you know, may, may not be as proficient. Let's not forget that the onset of the whole thing last year, you know, at this stage, you're trying to enhance the process, but the mindset of last year at the onset again was, we have a deadly virus, we need to get out, right? Like, that, that's basically the message you got from the governor's office. And, you know, I wouldn't disagree with that. I mean, I think it was rightfully so. But you'd also been given the perspective of, you know, prepare for a two-week outage. And then that just gradually got greater and greater and greater. So, oh, Mr. Dagastin, we also have some audience, either comments or questions.
Great. Well, so if no one on the board has any other comments or concerns, I would like to move on to those remarks. And everybody good? All right, thank you. Mr. Doll, if you would, read those audience remarks, please.
So we have one, Schulmeister, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. She's wondering about the pre-K program. You know, what's that gonna look like? Thank you for everything we're doing to keep the kids safe. Person has full confidence in sending back the kids, hope to see everyone soon. I'm sorry, sorry, Mrs. Ms. Colora, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. So again, for that initial phase, that would look the same. And then we'd be looking to build upon that as, as soon as possible. Folks, again, this isn't, you know, nobody's loving the idea of having to do this, but you know, from what I've been reading, what we've been engaging people in conversations about, while this isn't a perfect solution, it gives you a window of opportunity, kinda assimilate back into the environment. Cause you know, you're not just looking at it from a instruction standpoint, which again, I wouldn't disagree with you. Just coming back to school is the best for that scenario, but you're looking at it from an operation standpoint, logistics standpoint. You're doing things that you never had to do in a school setting, like take temperatures. You're looking at it from a cleaning facilities, transportation perspective, you know, to give you an idea. When I was principal of Wanted School, and I'm sure Mr. Gregory, Mr. Schwartz have been in the same boat. There was a time when we changed the parking lot configuration and the drop-off, right? From the north end of the building to behind the building, we changed it to the ramp. Before we did that, I spent probably a month and a half thinking about planning for as many scenarios as you, as you can consider of how to transition that back there, right? And then when I thought I had my plan, I called in the sheriff's department and I said, guys, from a traffic control perspective, what do you think about this? Then I called the transportation department and said, what do you guys think about this? The road crews, what do you guys think about this? Talked to a couple of people informally that I saw on the, you know, in the store or whatever. So that amount of thought process, not to toot my own horn by any means, but that's what school officials, teachers, principals, that's what you have to think about when you're changing one little small thing like a drop-off procedure. This is changing the entire operations of your school district. And, you know, you're basically doing that in a month. So, you know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen without some kind of hiccups, some kind of thing that you didn't anticipate. And those, that combination of starting off slow with the half a day with the AB to reduce those group sizes, as much as, you know, everyone's probably annoyed at having to do that, would just rather come back full steam ahead. It gives you the opportunity to try to identify some of those problems that you can only really experience when the lifeblood of the school is operating. So again, as soon as I, as soon as we can get to a point, full day, assimilation of the two groups in a healthy, safe fashion, everybody wants to do that. We don't, we wouldn't have to have any more discussions about, you know, how do we improve this or how do we improve? It's, it's ideal and hopefully we can get there as soon as possible. So Ms. Tracy Eisen, so she's a parent and a teacher and she's highly concerned about the plan, half-day twice a week, it's not gonna be adequate to educate children, worry about the, the virtual instruction, being a load, too much reliance on iExcel. It's okay, but when you sparingly, like she's saying, it's to supplement instruction, but not in place of. Feel strongly, at least a full day. Now, not only do parents have to find childcare for three days a week, hey, look, concerned about the childcare and emotional well-being and the length of time for a half a day and eating. Again, I, listen, I totally agree, Mrs. Eisen, you know, as I said before, for when you're looking at all those different dynamics, giving yourself what I'm gonna refer to as a soft opening, gives you the most, in my opinion, chance at success of having it open up fully. You're, you're also the thing we didn't talk about with the reduction in, you know, primarily class sizes for those days. You're also trying to, again, if you have an exposure to coronavirus, which is gonna, I would predict, change this conversation dramatically where the focus on whatever instruction is gonna radically shift 180 degrees to, everybody's gonna be concerned about hea- health, safety and well-being of their kids. If you get a notice saying that your child may have been exposed to coronavirus. So by having that softer opening, you limit, you know, the potential for who could have come in contact with, with the, the potential individual. And that's one of the things that, that would help with contact tracing and things that Department of Health does. Which again, I agree with you totally. If there were a better way to go about it, you know, I'd certainly be, just starting school, regular, traditional way is, is better for everybody with exception to this circumstance. And getting to those full days and then the complete assimilation, you know, the quicker we can do it in a safe fashion, you know, the better it's gonna be for everybody. Mr. Andrew Sparta wants to know, what's the emphasis on subject matter for when students are in class with the teachers? Talking about the slide with the face masks at all times, is that the case? The emphasis would be, you know, you're looking at it from a couple of different perspectives, not just the subject matter, but we talked about social, emotional learning and just the routine of the school day. So trying to assimilate into what you would normally experience in our half a day would, would basically be in alignment with what we're saying. So not overloading them in any one area, but trying to keep consistency with our normal school day. So specials, under this circumstance, if you can't be outside, you'd probably be push-in rather than rotating classes through a common room. To the greatest degree possible, we're trying to keep classes self-contained in either the class or cohort. Some, some of that is, you know, realistic and we can accomplish relatively easily. Some of it's a little more challenging, like in a middle school environment where kids move around. The masks, again, especially during that initial phase, but even probably extending beyond that, masks, masks are required. Not, not just, and I know there's people who disagree with that, not just in our school district, but in society. And, you know, when you turn on the news and things like that, I'm not choosing political sides. But, you know, basically that's what we're being told gives us the best chance of not spreading this thing. And at this juncture, that's, you know, what we perceive we need to go with. Ms. Cara Militech, she wants to begin by thanking everybody on the various committees for all the time they're putting in, the effort. The hybrid remote learning, I've been in a couple of meetings with Mrs. Militech and I got to know her a little bit, great lady, a teacher herself and contributes a lot to those discussion. Understands how tedious it is and she has some thoughts that she's brainstormed. Springs up the challenge of parents, you know, having to work and, you know, care coverage for their child. Have we considered serving parents if they'd like the half-day or the two days a week or whether prefer child remain in school day? Can a simple solution be to allow parents who like their child only attend half-day, be allowed to leave? Cut down on the numbers for lunch? Maybe requirement to have a brown bag? Added precaution of eating in the room, social distancing. Talks about teacher lunchtimes, someone's eligible for free and reduced lunch, maybe a short form with checkmarks could be submitted to parent place a week. So she proposes a variety of strategies to take into consideration and she's thoroughly happy to assist and continue assisting with the development of the process and the procedures. Yeah. So I mean, as you can imagine, we've considered a whole host of things. It isn't lost on any of us how this impacts childcare for not just parents, but also faculty and staff. You know, we, we've, in the back end of it, have been trying to work on different scenarios with our legal team, you know, what we could afford people in particular, staff in that scenario. And, you know, some of it is just, we don't have great answers for, other than I'm trying to keep that window as small as possible to, to get the assimilation as safe as possible. Not, again, not to, you know, to paint a picture that I understand it, not to, to, you know, whine about my own situation, but this scenario, not just in this district, but the districts that I'm associated with, my, my family, where my, my kids go to the second school district. My wife teaches in a third school district, will all have different schedules. So to give you an idea, I'm in the same boat that I'm asking people to be put in, you know, basically myself. So it's not like I, I got everything worked out on my end and I'm, I'm good. It's not that at all. So we're struggling with those things too. So it isn't, my point is, it's not lost on me, what we're asking folks to do. Lisa Farenfeld, we have president has some questions, I think. Mr. First, so I'm gonna try to group her questions together. You sent subsequent emails there, Lisa. Staff member, she has a lot of staff members, specific questions, like who will be assigned to check temperatures. So at this juncture, like I said, these devices that we got work fairly well. So rather than necessarily checking temperatures, we're kind of overseeing that process. Those would most likely be the people who are assigned, you know, arrival duties. Is the district paying for providing the shields for each staff member? So like I said, I only like to report out on things that we've taken possession of. So I've taken possession of 300 face shields. Again, strongly encouraged to wear them. You have a plan for substitute teachers coming in for paid training, Googles, they can be available as needed. Also, good incentive would be to hire two permanent subs that are training Google, substitute shortage is real. We need to entice them to work for us. Lisa and I, as well as board members and administrators have conversations about substitutes under this dynamic in particular. And it's a cha- it's a challenge. Yeah, we, we do plan to offer them training. We're in a process of reaching out to them in different ways. The teacher-student test positive for COVID-19, what's the protocol? So that's one of those things I talked about in the slide that's coming from the Department of Health. So they have a chart that they finalized, you know, basically with us and, you know, took some of our questions about them, went back, refined it a little bit, color-coded it. And now they're taking that chart and taking the charts from Hunterdon County, Warren County, I think Bergen County, and trying to just do an audit of all those counties to bring some continuity to what their procedures are. And then we'll share those out with everybody. But, you know, the gist of it would be that, you know, there's gonna be a variety of scenarios, like how did you learn about that information? Were you called or emailed in the middle of the night? You know, did a student come in with a, with a fever and, and we had to contact the parent? So certain situations, if they're on campus, student would be in an isolation area, parent would come and pick them up. Staff, parents receiving notification that we're working on with our attorney's office. You know, the initial idea, and you can't hold me to it again, cause we haven't received it officially from the Department of Health, was that they may shut you down for 24-hour periods so that they can make a better assessment of the circumstance. We would be involved with our nurse's office in helping to facilitate what's called contact tracing because we would be in a best position to tell them, you know, who the student staff that they may have come in contact with based on the classroom that they're in, based on the lunch that they're in, based in a group that they file into to get on the bus, all those sorts of things. If you just give me a minute, I'm gonna pull up. Lisa has other questions that I'm gonna try to connect to here. So when will the staff get the expectation to prepare for? She wants a fair amount of time to prepare for. I think we covered that with, you know, we get them to you as soon as possible. We wanna pay some folks to engage in that process a little more deeply. Says that we also need to increase the accountability for parents for logging their children in to participate. So I know those are conversations that not just increasing expectations, you know, across the board. But there's, there's a dynamic there where you're balancing, you know, whether it's teacher or student or parent, you're balancing the, like Mr. Hayden said, the PD for the parent, you're balancing the level of support they need with that accountability, right? He just goes on to note that she had parents deny signing their child onto a Google Meet for online lessons. What do we do in these situations? So as all things with education, the operations of a school, school district, there's gonna be unique scenarios across the board that don't fit into a common mold. And you're gonna try to address those on a case-by-case basis. You know, you have a disproportionate number of people just out of Lawrence School for one reason or another just wanted hard copy packets. They're not even falling into a category of I need the Chromebook training. So that's a unique scenario. Agrees that the recording of live sessions has nothing to do with teachers not wanting to do it. It has the, the, has to do more with the chance of students being videoed as well. Not all parents are in agreement with that. Special ed teachers are especially sensitive about the recording issue because, because of behavioral issues with their students. So we would never wanna put to students in a situation where any of their privacy issues are disclosed to people. That, that's not what Mr. Nuss or anybody else was referring to. Just trying not to miss anybody, cause I skipped. All right. Ms. Longo, teacher up at Wanted School. Just goes on to say the staff does extremely well with remote learning. We will work endlessly to ensure our students learn remotely. Administrators provide staff to time to collaborate, create dynamic lesson experiences. Students' learning and social, emotional being is at the heart of our teaching. All of your concerns of Mr. Nuss are being discussed and addressed, as Mrs. Randzan said. You know, wants more support and are going to do the utmost to meet our students' needs. Meetings are working very well to ensure the district is doing what's best for us. Thank you to everyone that's been involved with the reopening plan. And that's, she makes an important assessment in that this is, you know, our reopening plan, you know, there's probably, you know, there's always gonna be decisions that are made at more of an administrative executive level. Again, you know, we're taking a dynamic where we're now collaborating with elements of our region to the greatest extent you can. So there's some of that, that is at play when you, when you make decisions. But you want, you wanna try to build consensus around ideas, I think is what Mrs. Longo's saying, cause they have a much better chance of success. Joanne Merrill is, you know, what's the parent notification process about the plans? And she's just reinforcing that parents will need to work with their employers to manage any non-traditional school day. So again, we would post that to our website, but do an email blast so you get it personally. And again, it's not, it's not lost on us if we can, you know, and I'm, I'm making the assumption that all things go well, but, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be totally upfront with folks that it's not out of the realm of possibility that you do have to go to remote. You, you do get notices about potential exposures. Just share a story. I, you know, on the weekends generally, I'm down in South Jersey at my, visiting with my in-laws and stuff. And I noticed a couple of different things, you know, we drove through an area, we won't, you know, we're cautious about letting our kids, you know, go on things like rides and stuff like that right now, just our take on it. And an area we went through. And an area we went through that's very popular for summer, um, amusements, you know, basically looked no different to me than it would in a normal summer, you know? Maybe I saw a handful of people wearing masks and just crowds of people walking around. And another scenario, I saw, um, like those, those large-scale fishing boats that would normally either take like, you know, two hundred people out on a fishing excursion or, um, fish for restaurants. And I guess they had to shift their business model, I'm thinking probably, is they're not supplying, um, restaurants and they're, the people probably aren't going as fishing as much. So I'm watching this boat go up a, um, the bay into an inlet, and there had to be, I don't know, approximately a hundred to two hundred college-age young people, you know, having a great time, uh, you know, almost like what you would characterize as a party boat. So I don't know if that is how the business model changed, but, you know, there was no, there were no masks being worn that I could see, and, uh, so in, what I'm saying is that in my, my opinion, it may not be out of the realm of possibility that you see a blip or an increase in New Jersey's numbers, and it gives caution to the governor's office. Uh, and in, I wouldn't expect to know concretely whether we go brick and mortar in September or not until probably late August, because that, those numbers are consistently changing. So the best we can do is get you the information for this scenario, just so you can prepare. Um, so I'm in agreement with you. Uh, she goes on to say in a subsequent email that, uh, Ms. Merrill, that is, as parents, we are accepting that the fact that our children may be exposed to the virus as they leave our house. Uh, is there a reason for the half-day versus full day since our children, you know, I think is basically saying, like, if we're willing to take that risk, um, do you still need to do that? Understands the comments about lunch in the cafeteria and the classroom, working with parents, um, who do not work outside of the house, the schedule of half-day would before or after is very difficult. Yeah, again, it's not lost on me, I know this is a, a challenge, and, uh, you know, I, I hope I don't sound like a broken record, but the, that's the best-case scenario for a bad circumstance that school districts are in right now. The only schools, be perfectly upfront with you, I have a list of most Sussex County schools and what they're doing. Um, with exception to a, a very small number of what I would characterize as very small schools. There's not a whole lot of folks talking about, you know, everybody coming back to school, coming back for a traditional day. Um, so again, if we can transition to that full day, that would be the next step. And then the assimilation of the two groups, um, would be, would be the best-case scenario for everybody. And that, that would also be reflective of that the health circumstances are great. Uh, this one is not identified as a name, but what about those who plan to do all remote? So another comment, you know, in addition to what the various board members have said about all remote, is the governor's office, you know, a- and again, this is an ever-evolving circumstance, but is recently announced, I think as recently as yesterday, or the day before, that they will be coming out with some guidance relative to parents who wanna do all remote learning. I don't know the contents of that guidance, but, you know, we'll have to assess it when it comes out to see whether it's instructional guidance or procedural guidance. Um, but that will be an option. Mrs. Longo, uh, is back again, just, uh, to talk about that, I guess, relative to Mr. Hayden's comments, we, she's saying that we spoke about this, uh, the meaning support for parents with the reopening committee meeting and trying to address these concerns and striving to do the best for all stakeholders in this endeavor. Um, there are parents on the committee and their voices, you know, you're echoing the statements of what many of them are saying, and she appreciates the support and concerns for children's learning. So Ms. Jinks is, uh, Kathy Jinks is saying that are, are all students going to be assessed just the special needs self-contained classroom population? Uh, she agrees they're more likely to regress and more than likely will require an updated I E P. Um, I'm just gonna paraphrase here for a minute, she's disclosing some things about her child that I don't, you know, know for certain she wants read publicly, but, um, just because a child has special needs and is doing virtual learning doesn't mean they aren't getting the best education they deserve and learning the best of their ability, according to and following the guidelines in their I E P. Their parents, uh, do whatever possible to follow the classroom assignments, but modify them if needed, individualize the way content is being learned. Um, while they may not do every online activity, because that is not necessarily the way he or she learns, they may be tactile learners. Um, so we gotta make adjustments to, um, get them what they need. That doesn't mean that because, uh, they, they might not have watched a certain video or played a certain game that they didn't learn the content. Um, if you're going to assess a specific population, assess them all, I have no issue with. Um, kids being reassessed, I was going to request it myself, all students should be, I think, reassessed. Um, yeah, so part of that intake, again, your, your, your first initial thought is just the operations of the school, making sure it's healthy, safe, that social, emotional piece, and then, um, you're doing assessments, uploading, upfronting them, uh, fronting them at the, the onset of the school year, things like D R As. Um, a MAPS assessment, just to try to gauge, you know, regression that was, um, made for all students, uh, last year. And then there'll be some specific notations for, um, that, um, you make for individualized special education students. Mrs. Gomez, Kathy Gomez, a teacher at the Lawrence School, it's comforting to know that a plan has been formulated. She's questioning why, another teacher asked about the plan, uh, in a meeting this afternoon, and it was not clearly explained. Uh, she's asking that as senior staff members, I would like to admonish everyone that we need to be mindful to strive for clear and, uh, transparent communication. We all have a lot to get done and working to better, working together is the best way for this to happen. And I would echo Mrs. Gomez's statements, we appreciate everyone's doing. Um, I was on a conference call with another district at the time, finalizing some of that continuity, so maybe that's why it wasn't disclosed. But, you know, commented on the A and B schedule multiple times, um, in various venues. Um, and I'm comfortable at this juncture saying that, you know, barring some odd circumstance, again, coming out from the governor's office, that that's how we're proceeding at this juncture. So, Mr. D'Agostino, at this point, that's all I have in the, um, the, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Gall, I appreciate you reading those comments, and we appreciate, um, you know, everybody submitting those. Again, I just wanna take this, uh, this time to thank the board, the administration, our attorneys, uh, the teachers, the parents. Um, again, when, to echo what Mr. Gall was saying, when a squirrel took out a power line, we thought that was a crisis in, uh, Sussex Wanted, and this is, this is, uh, beyond our wildest dreams. So, um, I think the resilience that our community has shown is, uh, very, um, unbelievable and awesome. And, uh, you know, I'm sure the, the, the board, um, echoes that, that sentiment. So with that being said, uh, do you have another comment, Mr. Gall?
I don't, um, just to echo what you said, you know, we value everybody's opinion, and it doesn't work without the group of stakeholders, you know, joining forces and kicking around ideas and, you know, critic, being critical of ideas, you know, that's an important part of the process, so you can make it better. Um, so I, we just, you know, the administration preach, uh, appreciates everything that everyone's been saying.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I will look for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
A motion.
I'll second. Thank you, Mrs. Randzan, second by Mrs. Steele, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, everybody, thanks so much.
Good night.